Go ahead. Okay, I will call this regular meeting of the public state in building to order at seven oh one P M. Start with the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Roy, the clock that you brought is still working, so that's great.
I think that's a good sign.
Hell yeah, we know what time it is. Okay, so um we'll go through the agenda, public input. Correspondence. Nothing since last I picked up stuff, which is all invoices and things. Um let's do approval of meeting minutes, and I have a couple other things, so. Approval of meeting minutes, I will make a motion that we approve the regular meeting minutes from December thirteen twenty twenty three. We got a second, John Mentee. Does anybody have anything on the minutes that needs to be amended or corrected? We're all good?
Yeah.
Aye, opposed? Does anybody need to abstain?
Think I do, right?
Yep.
Yeah, okay, good. Great, okay, good, thanks. So just a couple of updates. As we move into the new year. Roy, Roy Steiner and John Mentee were reappointed to the commission by the board of selectmen at their meeting on January second, so, good? I'm sorry, I'm sneezing. Sorry again. So John said he got a letter today, Roy, I don't know if you got one yet, but you'll get a letter that'll say, go get sworn in again. So do that at your earliest convenience.
Okay.
And we'll be good to go. One of the things that we're gonna need to do soon will be the election of officers. And I will not be here for the next meeting, I'll be away. John will run the meeting, but maybe we wait on election of officers till everybody's here. Because we want to have Dave Wilson here too, and who else are we seeing? Just Dave Wilson. Okay, good. And then Kathy can fill us in a little bit more. You'll be hearing from Kathy and whoever else in the coming weeks. The town is looking at, well, they're definitely gonna do it. Moving to using Google meets instead of Zoom for virtual remote meetings. Same kind of process, there'll be a link to click on to get you into the meeting. You wanna?
Yeah, that's basically it, once I, so IT department's working on some instruction that we can send out to everybody, just basically on how to log in and where to find stuff.
Yeah.
You, it should be pretty simple. I think a lot of people use it for meetings, so. But it should have, depending on how we set it up, it should have all the attachments should be there. The link should be there. So you'd be good to go.
Okay, so be looking for more information from Kathy about getting that set up. If you, if you haven't used Google meets, you want to make sure you download the whatever, it's a Microsoft Teams is a different one, but Google meets, you want to make sure you have the thing.
I think if you
I think if you just click on the link, it's
It's all browser.
It's all browser, I think.
Oh, so you don't have to have a
Yeah, it's best if you have Google Chrome
Okay.
For a browser.
Right.
Uh but it works with any browser.
Right.
And it, it, it's all within you know, you pull up, you have to have a Gmail address.
Yeah.
And click right within there and go off.
Comes up, yeah.
Oh, Gmail address. You can tell, you got you to sign up with other addresses as well, yeah.
Yeah, I think it's, you just, once you get the invite, it's like, good to go.
Right, right. Good, okay, so like I said, we'll look for more info from Kathy, yes, we're gonna start in February, are they saying, or depending?
Yeah, February, the first, the February meeting, the first one, I should be on the Google meeting.
Yeah, so that February, so our meeting next meeting in January, like I said, is January twenty fourth, I won't be here, but John will run the meeting, so hopefully everybody else can be here, so we have a quorum. And then the February meeting will be the fourteenth. Okay, then.
What's that?
Ah, it's just a day.
Relevant. Another day you gotta waste money on.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll all bring chocolate for
There you go.
There we go. Okay, so let's get into our agenda, old business, police station training range. We've had, you know, eighty steps forward and two steps back, and then another bunch of steps forward, and lots of different things going on. Take it away, Evan.
All right, so, yeah. Not gonna focus on the negative. Overall, this year, we've made great strides forward. So great news is that we've got the MAU on site, we have the filter bank on site, we have the exhaust fan on site, everything has been installed onto the pad in the back of the firing range. That has been completed and performances in the process of installing the duct work that will then connect back to the building. Actually, they're starting at the building and coming back towards, towards the units.
To the unit, okay.
I was out there today discussing with them. They're marking out areas that they think that their four footprints are going to need to be, so Downs could go out there and provide them with a base. Whether providing, as long as we're not too muddy, Downs could go out there and start to provide them with a nice gravel base with a nice level footing for them to be able to do that.
So that hasn't been done yet, but they're kind of laying it all out now?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, alright.
So yeah, so they, their weather didn't impact them at all, they got the crane out there, the delivery, the shipments, all that worked out perfectly at the beginning of this week. And then another great news is that Action Target originally had told us that they're looking at getting their guys out here probably next week. Guess what? They showed up yesterday afternoon.
Okay, then. Yay, we'll take it, we'll take it.
Yeah. So I was there, I was there this morning. I was discussing several things with them, they're basically getting things off pallets, things unwrapped, sorted into categories as far as where they're going to need them, so to facilitate their install. They told me that they probably will not need Downs on site for coordination, because they're just doing their sorting until next week. So I was able to reach out to Kevin, Downs, and he said he'll have himself and the Rogers Electric and their fire suppression guys out there next week, starting on Monday.
Okay, so now will they need to do stuff that Rogers and Fire Expression, will they need to like Action Target does this, and then they put the, you know, kind of coordinating back and forth between all of them?
Yeah, it's gonna be some, yeah, exactly, like they're gonna hang a baffle, and then they're gonna have to put in the sprinkler head, and then the Action Target's gonna have to put in the horizontal base, so yeah, it's gonna have to kind of be
Yeah, okay. So they, so they all have to be there doing their parts one at a time, and
Or, or Action, I mean, this is, these are methods that are gonna have to work it out, so they're probably, one day they're gonna work out how they're gonna do it, could be Action Target goes and hangs
Yeah.
five baffles, baffles.
Then they correct the next day and
Right, yeah.
Okay, good.
How long is this process?
Action Target says they need twenty six working days.
Really?
Yeah.
Really? So they're gonna be here for twenty six days?
That's what they say.
Yeah.
That glued the back, putting the back when I see it.
Yeah, they've got to put all that together, right?
Right, that's, it includes everything.
Yes, the su- yeah, yes.
For whatever. Yeah, walls and everything, yeah, okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, that makes more sense, okay.
Uh and then on the owner vendor side, E S E has been out there several times now, they're out there again today. I was talking to the guys, they're probably about fifty percent done running their controls. The, the last piece is probably, again, has to do with the MAU and the controls for the unit that's being, just was dropped earlier this week. I was also out there on Monday with Network Synergy. We had a little bit of a miscommunication. He thought I had the wireless access point. And I thought he was bringing the wireless access point. So obviously, I didn't have a wireless access point.
Who walks around with a wireless access point?
Right. So he has provided me with a quote, he just, they just sent it to me at three thirty today. It's fifteen hundred dollars. Which is a lot less than the five thousand dollars that we had budgeted for. And that also includes termination at the Action Target's control panel.
And that's everything they need to do?
Correct.
Network Synergy, okay.
So I am going to show this quote tomorrow to the Action Target installers to make sure that they agree
Everything's covered.
that that's, everything's covered.
Good.
And we'll, if that's everything is covered, we could say Network Synergy, yes, we're good to go. I also spoke with Signet. And Signet is, who is your security vendor? And they are sending a team out on Tuesday of next week.
Check everything out?
Yeah.
Okay. So for the next meeting, we should have something from them to approve?
Yeah.
We could possibly approve that tonight pending approval by Action Target?
Well, we already, we already covered five thousand dollars for that.
Yes, but we still have to approve it, because it has to get, it's like a proposal in a way, we have to get it signed, it's like a contract, right?
Yeah. Okay, yeah, yeah, right. Correct.
It places our signature, isn't it? Yeah. So we will look at that a little bit later. Okay. So that's all of Network Synergy and Signet are all the other people we need to get going on this. So is there, is, once Action Target gets going on putting all the stuff on the ceiling and using whatever, did they bring a forklift with them?
No. No, I, I, you know, speaking to the guys, I said, are you bringing a forklift? And they said, yes.
So they'll show up with one?
Right.
Once they get all that stuff on the ceiling, they're gonna have to close the back wall before they install all the back.
Right.
So the back wall could get done hopefully sooner rather than later. If it were me, and it was, I'd do a little tarp tent over, put a heater in it, and they had to put at least a primer coat on that thing for the rest of the winter. And then maybe in spring, they gotta get that
Yeah, I mean, it's fifty thirty degrees out today.
I know, and it's gonna be doing that on and off, so, yeah, we'll figure it out. So we might be able to get the big hole closed sooner. Plus, they also have to close around where the ducts go in, because those were just left as big holes, and they have to be closed into, around the ducts, right?
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, uh, yeah, the southern end is fully closed, and already the northern one is not.
Okay.
Yeah, because next week, we're supposed to be down to the teens that night, so.
And then it'll go back up?
Crank up the heat, baby.
Yeah, and then it'll get warm again, so.
Yep.
Um, anything else?
When, when is the, the completion date?
So
Couple months ago.
Yeah, November seventeenth. So twenty six days from today would put us
Mid February.
Yeah. But that's Action Target's completion date.
Late August.
Downs would then have uh probably sometime after them to do some cleanup around the edges. I'd probably give them another week after that. So I would say we're probably turning over the space
End of February?
Yeah. And then we'll commissioning, which doesn't affect occupancy, beyond going after that.
And there'll also be a period of time, which probably wouldn't too much effect using the space, but a short period of time of, like any project, where turning the building over to the town, everybody who's, needs to know how to run whatever pieces and parts, they get a training from whoever, Downs usually set, with the main building, Downs set that up with the building maintenance guys and with the police department to just go through and then hand them all the binders of materials or DVDs or whatever they're gonna give them to.
But generically speaking, it should be done by the end of February.
I would think.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, twenty six days puts us at February fifteenth.
That's, that's not working days, I think, right?
That is
Do they, do they need twenty six working days?
Yes.
Okay.
So is there any else, have any other questions or anything else we need to look at? We do have invoices and such.
Good news?
Yeah.
For a change.
All of a sudden, quickly, everything's getting done, yay. Okay, uh, there's nothing else, we will move into doing, we'll do change order first and then invoices? And a proposal, I don't know if I have to change order though. It's number nine, right? Have it. That's the proposal from?
Yeah, that was the proposal from
Okay, so this is the change order, so with lots of back and forth between Action Target, Chikonski Humes, et cetera. The pad for the make-up air unit behind the range has the big unit on it, and there's giant ducts that go out, and then it's the building. That kind of elbow corner where they turn to go back into the building has to have supports under it. So there were, they were back and forth on, they wanted us to pour a giant pad which seemed so that what they've done is come up with, they're gonna use the big square underneath that area, because there's some what they sent shows H blocks sitting on a roof. Well, it's not gonna be on the roof, it's gonna be on the ground, but if they put, you know, stone, et cetera, filter fabric, that'll be fine. So that's what this change order is, and you're gonna have to I can't see the number.
Uh, one thousand eight hundred seventy seven dollars and eighty four cents.
Say again, one eight seventy seven, twenty forty eight. So this is for Downs to take care of putting those, there's one, one end, one on the other end, so it's materials and labor.
Well, they legs, pads for legs, hold the duct.
So, so it's a pad for the leg, yeah, and they're gonna make one big square instead of four little ones, right?
Right.
Yeah, so one big square under that corner.
So just gonna dig up the dirt, put down gravel.
Yeah.
So instead of having a gigantic pad, you're just gonna have something that holds up? And then they're gonna probably use, they'll probably use some kind of a
Yeah.
Polyurethane.
Filter fabric or something under it, edging, so it doesn't
Yeah. They're gonna, they'll probably put like a concrete pad, like the pre-made pads down for the foot?
They're just doing
No, no, so it, they're gonna sit on these, uh, whoops, sorry, not those, these H blocks.
Yeah, okay, so they'll, yeah, so they'll have something, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. So
Yeah, and they'll, that's right.
Yeah, so the change order has all those
It includes the eight blocks, though.
Yeah.
I didn't know they were gonna use white.
Yeah, but blocks are already
Yeah, the blocks are
The blocks were
Part of, uh, Action Target's
Action targets, yeah, this is just something on the ground for the blocks to sit on, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, right, right. Wasn't there a conversation in the beginning about, I want a monstrous pad for this?
Yeah, eighty four by twenty three.
Twenty three is the answer to putting a base in to hold the corner of the duct, or kind of
Yeah. Because if the unit's here and the corner's over here, they want us to pour a pad all the way. Not necessarily.
Yeah, that's really expensive.
So I will, so we can continue the discussion, I will make a motion that we approve Downs' change order number nine in the amount of one thousand eight hundred and seventy seven dollars and forty eight cents to create support pads for the duct work for them make up area.
We'll start with that?
Okay, so, let's, we were already discussing, so any other questions?
Yeah, so we had a contingency plus or minus eight grand, right, so this is gonna, what is this, six grand?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, and it's, um, oh, you sent the
Yes.
new budget out, so it's sixty five hundred. Yeah. Yep. And much less than if we poured that much concrete. So does anybody have any other questions, comments on this? Good, all right, let's take a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Done? And if I have that printed inside, I'll check on that. Probably did, right? A lot of stuff.
I mean, you said we're, we're looking pretty good for nothing being
So
Yeah, we're getting to the point where there's no more unforeseen, and we're very conservative in our budgeting for the low voltage and security. So as we're getting in these numbers for, for those two, we have five and ten thousand budget for them. And we're getting, you know, fifteen, two thousand dollars for those, so we're
That'll go back up into contingency, yeah.
Right. That tracks that number.
How do we hold out, how do we hold out with the ring? This past week.
Driving.
Drive.
Drive, good. Actually, while you were out there, we took a walk down back, or go back down to Johnson's.
And we, and we just drive the ring in. That would have been the
That's right, so I started thinking about it, like, okay, how do we, you know?
I was thinking about doing
And we had
So
So we, so we had, we had roughly fifteen in there for those two items, and we're, we're a couple of red.
Yeah.
Yeah, because then it'll go back up into contingency, which is good.
Yeah, so I'm just gonna go that way.
All right, so can we look at that proposal and
Yeah.
we'll see if we feel comfortable, maybe make it a
Yeah, so I mean, like, this is the wireless port. Hey, more bad, I don't know if this means anything to you.
What's that, I'm sorry? So this is the wireless access point that they're gonna put in
Oh, okay.
That, uh, Network Synergy, this is their proposal. Because it's, he just received it this afternoon, but I thought if they need to get started on, do they need to get started? Yeah, they probably do.
So, I mean, the Downs pulled all the cable already, the boxes are there, the cable's there.
Yeah.
Uh, the only, we just want them to get there because their ATI is gonna put the baffles in, and they need to put in it before the bathroom goes up.
Okay. So since he just got this and it didn't go out for everybody, I was thinking if we look at it now, we could approve it contingent upon him meeting with them next week?
Uh, tomorrow morning.
Tomorrow morning. That if they haven't, if they don't need to change it.
Confirm, confirm tomorrow morning, this is exactly what they want.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So, so what I'll do is I'll make a motion that we approve the proposal from Network Synergy for wireless access point in the amount of, the total you said fifteen hundred?
Yeah.
Flat.
So there's, yeah, there's nine hundred and twenty hardware
Six hundred.
Six hundred labor.
Fifteen twenty, okay. So I'll make a motion, we accept the proposal from Network Synergy for wireless access point in the range, and total amount of one thousand five hundred and twenty dollars contingent upon confirmation with them in the meeting tomorrow.
Second, I'll second that.
You got seconds? Anybody have
Confirmation, confirmation with Action Target?
With Action Target and Network Synergy together, right? Guys, are they gonna come tomorrow too, or just you're showing the stuff to Action Target?
I'm sure I have to show them to Action Target to make sure that the specs are right, yeah.
Okay. 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 Any other questions or pretty straightforward? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Done, and then you can email us all, because we'll know how to post, like, end of the day, something like that.
Yeah.
Great. Sorry, maybe one second on that.
I think it was Roy.
And Roy, somebody over there.
I missed that, we said it was top.
Yep.
Back and see.
Um, then what else do we have? Well, we did the change order.
Yeah.
So now we just have invoices, search, does there, anything else, okay?
Yeah.
So whichever you want to throw up there first.
STV first.
Right. So I will make a motion that we approve STV invoice number nine zero zero two nine six seven two dated December twelfth, twenty twenty three, for the firing range of the amount of two thousand sixty four dollars.
Second.
Wait, we got a second from probably Roy, that was for the, much the month of November. Mostly Evan, a little bit Angela. Any questions on this? All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Done. And Chikonski Humes. This is a kind of progress payment, I'll make a, approve Chikonski Humes invoice number two three three six one, dated December fifteenth, twenty twenty three in the amount of three thousand dollars.
Second.
Got a second from John Mentee. So we still have a balance due of, this is, construction administration still have a balance due of five thousand. Any questions, concerns? Good to go?
Good.
All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Now we're done with that. And then Downs? So we have an application for payment from Downs. It's a bazillion pages long. So they have to do all the backup stuff. Yeah, just the first page. So I'll make a motion that we approve Downs Construction Company's application for payment number four for the training range in the amount of hundred and nine thousand five hundred and eighty five dollars and thirty four cents.
Second that.
Roy seconds it.
How much is the balance after that?
Balance to complete is seventy six thousand four hundred and sixty three dollars and seventy seven cents.
Now, is, is that where the Mason's bill was part of that?
The Mason's bill will be part of the balance to finish, because they have to close up the hole. Opening up the hole was, not this one, but probably a couple before.
No, that's, that's what I'm asking, so, but the Mason has part of this bill, is that correct?
I think so.
This period Yeah.
It has two thousand dollars balance to finish, is what I'm showing on the masonry.
Right.
Well, that's not right.
Yeah, balance to finish is two thousand dollars. Total contract for masonry was twenty six thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. This period, nine thousand two hundred and forty nine. Balance to fin- finish, two thousand dollars.
That's not right. Plus retainage, which is, let's, let's, if the Masons haven't closed the hole up what have they done?
Well, I thought that, I thought their bill was, was a hundred percent, but maybe I read that wrong. The backup.
It's actually, I think it's ninety two they have.
Is it?
But I don't see that on, I didn't see that in these, so it would have been before, so no, let me see, I take more time with this, I was looking at it when I was printing it.
I think Mark did join on, Mark, can you speak to what else the masonry contract would have held? That would, uh be that ninety two percent?
No, the only thing left is to, is to close up those openings. The, the wall has been constructed. The, the openings have been made. So that's all they have left is just to close those up.
But opening then wouldn't have been that much clearer, would it?
I mean, there's shoring and a lot of Well, their schedule values, demo was eleven thousand two fifty. CMU labor was eight, ten thousand, and C, CMU material was five thousand. They leave in two thousand of labor line.
But the, the material, a lot of it's there.
Well, that's what they're saying, the material's there, they just need two thousand dollars to fill the whatever.
Right, yeah, the materials there, such as
It's the material that was there before. They didn't buy new material, did they?
Yeah, but see, that, the block was not over.
The split face block?
Yes.
From last time, from
They're not, they're not asking for material this application. They've already built all the material.
Precisely. And I'm, I'm seeing that right here.
They, they, they do have the pallet of block that's left down there.
Yeah, there's a bunch of block that's left from the original construction.
Is right, I, I thought it would, when I was looking on that, it looked like, I thought I saw it was a hundred percent, but it's not.
Yeah, it's ninety two percent, but still. Yeah, it's ninety-two percent, but still. So if they did.
I guess, I guess the question is, is two thousand dollars enough to accommodate?
Yeah, I, I mean, it's, I don't even know, it, it, it's a, filling in a garage door size hole, that's.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't think it's unreasonable.
Cuz the current, actually, the current payment due that they have is eight thousand, it's not the larger amount. The larger amount, sorry, pays it off. Yeah. Actually, this period, oh, it's, yes, like, eight, nine thousand, okay. So, concerns or?
No, 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 I, I, for some reason I had it in my head that it was a hundred percent, but.
That it was a hundred percent, and that's not, yeah, that's not, okay.
Cuz I, I remember somewhere along the line about closing a hole.
Yeah. Yeah.
Shooting duck, that or anything, it looks like over there.
No, it's good, it's good to check, always good to check. Okay, uh, anything else, anybody else have any other questions or concerns?
Thank you.
Yep, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed, done.
And Nancy, just for you to know, Kevin did ask that we get signatures on all these pages as well.
We, we do have signatures on those pages.
The prime contract.
Yes.
Change orders.
Yes, and I, oh, I'm pretty sure I scanned them and sent them to you, but.
Things I would've sent them to you.
Yeah. Actually, so what I did with this.
Yeah.
I printed the whole thing, but I saw that there were no signatures on the change order pages, because I had Dan sign them.
Yeah.
And then I scanned them, and then I filed them with the town clerk, so.
Yeah.
That's the page with the signature, so if you don't have it, let me know and I'll send it to you.
Yeah.
Cuz I didn't.
I saw that, yeah, I thought that we had them too when I was, when you said that.
Because this, so like, this is the prime contract change order, meaning it's changed to the GMP.
Yeah.
And then there's this page, which is just change order proposal number two, which also has a signature on it. Then I printed from what I've got in my documents, so check and see, if you need them, let me know and I'll send them.
Yeah.
Cuz the originals are already filed with the town clerk.
Yeah.
Okay. Cuz I saw that, that there were no signatures on those, and I thought that we had given them to them.
Yeah.
But I sent them to you and not to Downs.
Yeah.
So that you could distribute them, you know, I didn't know whether Chikenski Humes needed copies too, with, with, since there, the two signatures is Downs, Chikenski Humes, and then the town. So Chikenski Humes might want copies of the assigned pages too. All right. Is that it for Downs?
Uh, we've got, oh, for, um.
For the training range, yeah. Did, so you wanna put that budget sheet up quickly, and then we'll look at that last, then.
So this, uh, includes that change order number nine that we just approved today. So that's, you can see that it's gone down to, from that eight thousand dollar number to the sixty-five hundred dollar number. It does not include the updates to the, uh, security and low voltage numbers. So you could see, that was ten thousand and seventy-five hundred that we had carried, so as you could see, as we get those numbers in, we're very conservative, um, and those numbers will be adjusted as we get those finalized and bring them up to the contingency number.
And EFC is a contractor?
Uh, EFC is the controls contractor, uh, so.
But that's a contract number or?
That is a contract number, yes.
Yeah, so, yeah, we did have a proposal from them that we approved, and we actually got an invoice like late this afternoon from them that we'll have to do next time. And it's less than half, so they're half, more than halfway done, that's good. And so with the low voltage, et cetera, the security, with the low voltage, is, is there like, other stuff that needs to go in it, is there telephones or communication things or?
There's already a telephone in that space.
Okay.
Yeah, that, that was installed previously.
That's kind of hooked up into the whole system of the building?
I picked it up today and I got a, I don't know.
Well, but does it, where does it get you? Does it get you to dispatch, does it?
Uh, I, I got it, I just hung up.
Oh, okay, so, um, Lieutenant Durkin, do you know about the phone in that space? Has anyone ever used it?
Uh, no.
Okay, maybe we should check and see that it's, like, when you, when you use phones inside the building to call each other, different extensions and stuff like that, probably have to dial an extension?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, well, I can give it a shot, I have not used it, and I have not heard of anybody else, someone may have, but I'll, I'll double check it.
Well, and Evan's gonna be there tomorrow, so he can check too, to make sure that it is hooked into your main system, so we don't have to go back and do that another time, let's, let's look into that now. Okay? So, like we said earlier, anything out of those two lines that aren't part of, you know, any proposals we received, go back up into contingency. Which is a good thing. And we don't foresee any big, I think, coming down, so we should be good. Okay?
Good stuff.
Anything else? Anybody have any questions on the budget? So we'll move along to Rockwell Johnson Schools. I asked Evan while he was out there, he went back there to see what the rain did to that area, but he didn't, I'll have to go check it out.
Could I, could I ask one question about the police station before we move on?
Yeah, sure.
Where are we with the EverSource rebate?
I have not heard anything back from EverSource coming into the new year, John, I'll check with them tomorrow morning.
All right, do they have the paperwork all filled out and signed?
They do, yes.
All right, so, i- if you don't mind, if you could check, because typically by the end of January, they, they start a new program.
Okay.
The new program is gonna be, is gonna require higher, higher efficiencies, that's what I'm being told, so we don't wanna lose out on that opportunity. We wanna get our rebate in before they issued the, the new parameters for incentive.
Gotcha.
If you need any help with anything, let me know, cuz I, I talk to them weekly.
Oh, good, thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks.
So with the schools, um, I did get all information from Dr. Carver saying that the audit is in process. That was basically it, so, it's nothing that we have to do anything with, they just start doing whatever the office of school construction is doing their thing, and we'll see how it goes. But we did get an invoice from Perkins Eastman, which is basically SLR for their final, when they had to go out to, uh, that area behind the stormwater management area behind Johnson to approve all the work that was done, make sure it was finished, et cetera. So hopefully it's all working correctly. Here it is. So, like I said, it's mostly, it is pretty much all SLR, there's not nothing from Perkins Eastman on here, but they go through Perkins Eastman, they have subcontractors. So make an invoice, or make a, a motion that will approve invoice, Perkins Eastman invoice number zero zero six eight nine six two dot zero nine dot zero dash ten, dated January seventh, twenty twenty-four, for Johnson School and the stormwater management area behind in the amount of one thousand one hundred and five dollars and sixty-three cents.
I'll second it for discussion.
Okay. So, go ahead, you have a question?
Yeah, what did you do for a thousand bucks?
Drove to.
Signed off on it.
Signed off on it, drove back.
Gas is expensive. Not that expensive. I, I was just curious, just, I don't know. Seems, seems like a substantial amount.
Well, it shows, um.
It's broken out built?
So it's all SLR, and it's SLR shows, um.
I don't have each way, it's three hours here. Yeah, it's seventy-five dollars and sixty-five cents.
Darren, there's mileage, but there's also Darren, um, Darren who came out, were, were you the one that met about here?
Yeah, Darren, who put in.
Yeah, so it's his time to get here, his, so it's his time.
Okay, so after this, you're done.
Yeah, they should be, unless we have a problem, and then we gotta call them back out, and that's a whole other thing.
Am I reading that correctly, that that's under budget compared to what there was allocated for that category?
It does look like that. Look, it would be nice.
Yeah, I, and it just, it was confusing, cuz this is, you know, his trip was in September, and SLR, or the Perkins Eastman bill is January seventh.
It's probably September thirty-first.
Right.
Yeah, and that's, and that's often when we were getting Perkins Eastman bills that had SLR on them. Some, some parts of the SLR was like a whole month or more behind, because SLR does their billing, sends it to Perkins Eastman, and then Perkins Eastman puts it in with their billing.
Right.
In the next month, yeah, yeah. But this should be it. Shouldn't get any more from this. Good? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, done. So I think that's it, unless anybody has any questions on the, um, school projects, and we'll keep waiting and to see what we hear from Dr. Carver on the audit, hopefully that'll get done soon, and the town can get their final payment. All right, so, nothing more on schools, we're good, um, the HVAC for the high school. Again, the grant was submitted. Dr. Carver's word of ed was told, should be here in March, but we'll have to see about that, because it could be June, we don't know. So that's just a wait and see kind of thing, and wait and see. And then the, um, locker room renovations, I have not yet made an appointment to meet with Rachel over the holidays, it was kind of difficult to get that done, but I will do that soon. That should be, I think, it for this meeting, I think, uh, like I said, you'll look for emails from Kathy explaining about using Google meets for our remote meetings going forward, and, uh, John's gonna be running the next meeting, make sure John has everything he needs, and hopefully everybody can be here, so we have forum. And I think that should be it.
Signs of plans. They can most return.
Second.
You have a second, said David, second from David, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed, done, thank you.
This has got to be your record.
Is this a new record?
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Goodnight, everyone.